Good evening, everyone. So nice to see you with us this evening. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independence School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, October 8th, 2019. The time is now 7:01 PM. Board Trustees present Winford Adams Jr., Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Donna Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence any cell phones or electronic devices that you may have at this time, please. Thank you. Tonight's presentation of the colors will be led by the Decanee Wildcat NJROOTC Battalion. And we have Captain Davis here tonight who will introduce them.
Good evening, it's my pleasure. The Decanee Wildcat assists of the pleasure to be led by Chief Petty Officer Dominique Rodriguez. The color guard commander carrying US flag is Cadet Commander Vausa Chief Petty Officer Kirk Kuzvassa. Carrying the Texas flag is Commander Officer Eric Lopez. The right rifle is Cadet Ensign Asprey Alvarado. The left rifle is Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Ego Esteban. The Decanee Wildcat NJOTC Battalion is led by Lieutenant Scott Tressler, Captain Victor Allen, Captain Robert Dunn. At this time, everyone please rise for the pleasure of the Black Legion and please remain standing after.
All in. Halt! All in. Present. Go!
Please talk in for the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, the second flag.
On the Texas flag, our pledge to the Constitution of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All in. Go! Ready? Go! Center. Halt! Present. All in. Halt! All in.
At this time, I'd like to ask everyone if you would observe a moment of silence in Thank you. You may be seated.
Hey, Chris, how you doing?
I'd like to recognize trustee Chris Bell has joined us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Our next item is the superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees. Good evening, and all of our guests in the audience. We have several announcements to update you on for tonight. The first set are really about some activities that have been going on over the district since our last board meeting. As you remember, we had College Night this past week. It's been a busy month, and so we saw a lot of individuals out at College Night. We had more than 150 representatives from higher education that came out in the military to support us during that event. And so we're really excited about how many parents came out. As you can tell, we've moved the event from venue to venue, and it's about time to look for another venue based on the number of people that came out. It's important that all of our staff that are here and any parents in the audience know that right now is the time for you to complete the federal student aid forms known as FAFSA, and it's now open for anyone that's considering college. And if you're interested in getting a priority deadline for the state of Texas, that form must be completed by January 15th. And so I do know we have a few staff members that have seniors out there, Dr. Cobb and Dionne. And so make sure that your kids get the FAFSA done by January the 15th. We also had another great event at Westfield that was our National Night Out program. We had another great turnout for this event. Many of us left. An event for the induction of the National Technical Honor Society at Decanee that night, and we rushed over to Westfield for the National Night Out program. And once again, this was Chief Culpris' first event, being our chief of police, and your team was absolutely successful. So thank you very much for that. Saturday, we had our ribbon cutting for Springwood Village Middle School. And we're really excited, as I've said numerous times over and over, about what's going to be happening there at Springwood Village, but more importantly, opening a new middle school that, of course, our community supported in our 2016 bond program. We're hoping that Springwood Village will become our first international baccalaureate program in our district, creating an atmosphere for global learners. And so we're going to definitely keep our community and our board apprised as they're going through the authorization process, making sure that we get that designation. Last week, at our board work session, we had an opportunity to talk with you all specifically around our targeted improvement plans. We've got to hear from several of our principals about their targeted plans and response to the state accountability ratings. We know the many parents turned out in September at the individual campuses to hear a little bit more about the plan, but more importantly, to give feedback regarding what they also think is necessary to continue improving those schools. We want to thank everyone who took time to let us know their thoughts and suggestions from our community, because we understand and appreciate all of the feedback that we get from them. I also want to commend our principals, all of the individuals that had an opportunity to come through and to present their tips to us last week. They came in very well-prepared. We got an opportunity to push them a little bit in some areas. They responded accordingly and have some very tight plans as a result. So once again, principals, thank you all so much. And again, it's Principal Recognition Month as well, so happy Principal Recognition Month to you as well. Last week, we also had an opportunity to hear from the Holsworth Center. As many of you know, we were selected to be a part of the second cohort of the Holsworth Center Leadership Program. We've been really engaged in developing, working towards the development of our leadership definition, but really giving you all an understanding this past week of how we're going to build our Spring ISD house in terms of leadership. So we want to just say a special thank you. We speak with the Holsworth team often, but we're really fortunate that we were selected to participate. Last week, Spring ISD Financial Services Department was awarded the Transparency Star Award from the Texas Comptroller of Public Accountants. We received this prestigious award for the district's financial transparency webpage, which lays out an easy-to-understand manner of all aspects related to Spring ISD's budget. So this is an award that we've been accustomed to getting, and we want to say a special thank you to our financial services team under the direction of Ms. Westbrooks. Last but not least, on Tuesday, October 15th, we're set to launch our annual employee engagement survey administered by K-12 Insight. We had an amazing response last year from our employees, and we're hoping that we can get them to complete the survey once again. We want to remind everyone that all survey responses are confidential, but that the data collected is extremely important as we consider ways to strengthen and improve our district as a great place to work. Everyone's feedback matters, and we look forward to getting those results and coming back to you all in February and sharing those with you. This does conclude my very lengthy announcements, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Do we have any trustees that would like to make remarks tonight?
Just wanted to comment. President Newhouse and Dr. Watson and I met last week with Robbie McGowan from Region Four to talk about the Lone Star Governance Framework, which we're in the process as a board of implementing for purposes of self-evaluation. We're evaluating teachers and principals using an instrument designated by the state, T-Test, and as a T-Pest. And so Lone Star Governance, the framework that we are developing in cooperation with Dr. Watson, will be the board's way of evaluating the work that we're doing in support of everybody. So just wanted to comment on that and continue to educate people that as we're requiring and providing professional development for the administration and the faculty, we're also undergoing it ourselves.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for being here. I think yesterday was the last day you could register to vote for the November election. But I just wanted to make everybody aware there are a number of propositions that are on the ballot, and one of them is Proposition 7 that has to do with the General Land Office increasing some money into education, what's called the Available School Fund. So take a look at that, Prop 7, if you don't mind, and give it your consideration.
Good evening, Madam President, and Dr. Watson, and leadership team. My role as the officer in the Texas School of Black Caucus and also a recent graduate of Leadership Task Force, I just want to commend Dr. Watson and our leadership team. Our story is being told, and I always said, the day first day I came on the board, we had to tell our story, all the great things we were doing. We was in Dallas, and people know about Spring. They know what we're doing, they know the great things we're doing. So I want to commend Dr. Watson, and I want to commend the leadership team, our principals and our entire staff for the great things that we are doing and the great achievements and the great success.
I just wanted to repeat how wonderful that the Honor Technical Society induction ceremony was, and I was just amazed at how many fine students of Spring ISD met the academic and character requirements to get that induction. They were from Decanee, Spring, Westfield, and Wunchee. So it was four high schools worth, and it was quite a group. They were wonderful to meet. The other thing is, every once in a while, I go back and look at some of the things we have been doing in Spring, and we have regular updates on different projects and products that we have in Spring. And one of the ones that I keep going back to that I am so impressed with is the Education Planning Guide. I know this isn't the year, because the kids have already, you know, out there in their courses and that sort of thing, but that Planning Guide is one of the most amazing documents I have ever seen. There's like 100 over 100 pages of careers and pathways for students to take, and it tells the students which courses to take. It tells them how much that occupation pays and what kind of certifications post-graduation they would need. It is just an amazing document. I recommend anybody in the public or in the school system to go look at those pathways.
That's a good point. I wanted to take an opportunity. Dr. Watson was correct, it has been a very busy, busy month. I had an opportunity, I work with Elsa Capa Elsa Sorority Incorporated in registering folks to vote. And so September 24th is National Voter Registration Day, and for the last several years, we've gone to our high schools. And this year, we were able to go into Decanee and speak with the government classes, and we got the students to register, and they asked great questions like, "Why should I vote?" "The Electoral College makes the decisions," and so they kind of challenged us with some answers. And then that evening, I was able to participate in the Open House and Community Partnership event at Anderson Elementary. And they have had a lot of booths for community partners. I was really impressed with the engagement from the community, and there were hundreds of parents. One lady told me she walked over two or three blocks just to get to the parking lot. So it was packed, and we were very successful. We registered close to 100 people to vote, register to vote between those different events. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the district for that partnership and that we were able to successfully do that. Real excited about what's happening and the direction we're taking with our middle schools. We spent a lot of time with the tips and the principals on Thursday. I'm excited about the direction they're taking and List Six and the opening of our ribbon cutting ceremony at our Springwood Village. So there's a lot of good things happening, and I'm really pleased in the direction that we're taking and looking forward to brighter future.
Madam President, I'd like to kind of piggyback off of Dr. Watson and Trustee Durant on the targeted improvement plans. Principals gave us a great presentation on Thursday. It was amazing to see how excited they were about this and the teamwork that, you know, they could call on anybody, any time of day, night, fellow principals that have been in their role for a while, they could reach out to them, and they're such a cohesive group of folks. And it was just refreshing that after, that evening, to see how excited they are about those plans. And principals, thank you all so much for everything you do, and I could just feel the excitement in the energy in what you're going to accomplish this year. So thank you all, and thank the leadership, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. I had an opportunity also to visit College Night, and there was something new that I experienced that I was so pleased and so happy with. Last year, we had College Night at Spring Elementary, I mean, Spring High School, and at that time, we only had two vendors that came out for special needs students. On College Night at Westfield, we had 10 vendors just for special needs students. They had a section to themselves. We had students that came that have graduated from Spring schools. One young man I talked to, he and his mother were there. He's 20 now, and he's still being serviced, special needs, he can do this, understand up until he's 21. But he was looking for employment. He is still being trained through Spring Special Services. So it was so nice to see that we had mental health, we had food services, we had employment services for these students, we had reading services. Lamar University's Learning Disability Department was there, and I think we had a couple of other universities, Learning Disability Department. Things that we don't think of normally for students after they graduate, that they can go to a university and participate through their Learning Disability Department. So I want to thank the College and Readiness Counselors, College Night, for not forgetting about our special needs students and doing such a wonderful job and getting services for those students. So thank you to them.
And just by the way, trustee Newhouse, there were also some charter school kids out at our College Night that I talked to, so.
Yes, we had a community of people from Spring utilizing our College Night services.
Yep.
And we didn't mind that. We were happy to be able to provide those services for everyone in our community. It didn't matter what school they attended. We were happy to provide services for Spring community. Thank you. Okay, we will continue with tonight's agenda, and we have a time in which we are smiling and glad to do, because our next item is the A-B-C-D Award. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Chief Communications Officer Tiffany Dunn Ophill.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and his team members of the board. As you can see from your agenda, we have two recognitions this evening, and in our longstanding tradition here in Spring, I'm going to invite you down to the horseshoe for the presentation First up this evening is an A-B-C-D Award. These awards are very rare and only given to people who have repeatedly gone above and beyond the call of duty and their support of Spring ISD. Tonight's recipient has definitely done just that. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Eros Shaw, the founder and president of Maestro's Barber Academy, up to the podium. We're going to get you to stand right here, right here. We're going to have you stand there, right there, for a second. Mr. Shaw was recently recognized by the Texas Association of School Boards, TASB, as part of their annual business recognition program. That program honors organizations and businesses whose generous support helps Texas public schools be successful. Mr. Shaw was recognized by TASB for his longtime support of Spring ISD, including student scholarships to his barber academy, and by serving on important decision-making groups such as the 2016 Bond Committee. Mr. Shaw and his barber academy have also always been willing to partner with the district on important events, donating both money and time, specifically has helped with our annual Back to School Expo for years, and has been both a supporter and a participant in the district's fundraiser and wellness fair. Mr. Shaw has also supported district literacy efforts through the Maestro's Books and Barber Shop program, as well as through donation of books to our students. Through these efforts and many others, Mr. Shaw has shown he is always willing to go above and beyond for the students of Spring ISD. Please join me in congratulating him on his TASB recognition and for earning a district A-B-C-D Award. Congratulations.
And Ms. Ophill, I'd also like to let you know that Mr. Shaw is now a member of the Spring Independence School District Foundation. Woo! [applause]
[laughter] We're going to also get a photo of you. Mike, can you help us? [laughter] months, which goes to a member of our central office staff who manages an incredibly important job. At this time, I'd like to invite Spring ISD Internal Auditor Patricia Rios up to the podium. Stand right here. Patricia recently completed the requirements to earn the designation of Registered Texas School Business Administrator from the Texas Association of School Business Officials, TASBO. The certification is earned through a combination of coursework, on-the-job experience, and advanced training in the candidate's area of specialization. This particular designation is the highest level of certification that TASBO offers. The internal auditor role is an absolutely integral function for any school district, and Spring ISD is lucky to have someone in this role as talented, dedicated, and committed to both professional growth and student success as Patricia Rios. Please join me in congratulating Patricia on her accomplishment and her point of pride this evening. [applause] [laughter] Thank you.
Can point you to your seat.
We have been trying to do that for Ms. Rios. We learned about her award back in the spring of the year, but it looks like every month she had a conference to attend or a test to go take, and we didn't want to tell her. We wanted to surprise her. So we're just able to do it here in October. But we've been thinking of you since the spring, Ms. Rios. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you, Ms. Ophill. Our next item is Agenda Participation. In our new meetings, we are now implementing a compliance, Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. So we'll move to our next agenda item. It's the reading of the trustees' continuing education credit hours. State law requires that at the last regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held before an election of trustees must reflect whether each trustee has met or is deficient in meeting the training requirements for the trustee. So at this time, I'd like to share the hours and requirements met for each of the trustees. I'll start with Winford Adams Jr. He's met the Tier One hour requirement. He's met the Tier Two hours requirement. He's exceeded the Tier Three hours requirement and met the Tier Four hours requirement. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Chris Bell, he's met-
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the school board, and members of the superintendent's cabinet. I wanted to thank you this evening for the opportunity to share with you one more time our targeted improvement plans. We're going to briefly walk through the PowerPoint once again before we ask for your approval of the targeted improvement plan. As we talked about last week, our targeted improvement plans are built on levers that align very closely, not only with our key imperatives, but also with our list six tenets. As we mentioned last week, there are two accountability systems working in parallel, both relying on the state accountability calculations. In our state accountability system, we're working in domains. There are three of them. The first domain is achievement, the second is progress, and the third is closing the gaps. The federal government uses domain three, or closing the gaps then, to identify campuses which are potentially in need of comprehensive support, targeted support, or additional targeted support. As we mentioned last week, the state accountability system is built on an alphabetical rating system, A through F. Our federal accountability system then uses labels, comprehensive, targeted, and additional targeted. A campus might be identified in either state, or federal, or in both systems for intervention. The state accountability system in our district, we're looking at campuses that have an overall F, an overall D, earned a D in a domain, and all of those school categories then trigger intervention actions, up to and end, including the TIP, or the Targeted Improvement Plan. A label from the federal system also triggers these intervention actions. We talked briefly last time that we were together about the state requirements and the very compressed timeline that we've been working in. Our campuses were trained in the latter part of August and produced a targeted improvement plan for your review in the very end of September. Those campuses that were rated F, their plans were submitted to TEA, and we did a careful review of those plans with the superintendent and the Theory of Action Committee in the last two weeks. We will be using the targeted improvement plans and the essential actions that were identified and focus areas to quarterly review how our schools are doing. Those reports will be due to TEA and internally to the district in November, in February, and in June. Are there any questions that I can answer for you this evening?
I think we had a lot on Thursday. I think you answered all the questions.
So we will get these with the data filled in during, was it cycle one, cycle two, cycle three? So we'll get these Excel sheets that we have with the data filled in?
Yeah, so you'll get those filled in, but we also are going to have updates where we have the principals back talking with you about progress towards the goals that they had, and you could ask them more questions throughout the year.
Great, thank you.
There'll be multiple measures that we're reviewing, including those that are in the TIP, but we'll be looking at weekly and monthly and on grading cycles reports as well. Thank you for your time this evening.
Let me say thank you for the additional targeted improvement plans that were sent to us this week on our junk drive, the additional. We had a chance to see those, those schools that TIPs were sent to the state and the additional schools that we have on the plan, they came to us in this last junk drive, so we thank you. It now concludes with all of the, we have results on all of the schools, all of their TIP plans, so thank you for sending that to us.
And I see some pretty aggressive plans here. It's going to be an exciting year. So I really want to thank the principals and their staff because this has been some very interesting reading for me. Did you want to ask questions of principals tonight? Their plans?
I think they answered all my questions. I had quite a few. I just wanted to echo, and I think my colleagues agree, that we're in it together, and if there's ever something really from us or some support, we can lend. If you just outreach and let us know, we'll be there.
Thank you.
To our seven schools that were required to submit TIPs to TEA, we thank you for getting it to them on time in a timely manner, and as we look at them, I've had an opportunity to see, I really think those are goals that we can achieve and will achieve this year. So thank you to those schools for working so very hard on this. Thank you. Ms. Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak on this agenda under public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Since there are no identified speakers, we will continue with tonight's agenda. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-2020 Targeted Improvement Plan as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees to approve 2019-2020 Targeted Improvement Plan as presented by the administration.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Dawn Davis, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-2020 Targeted Improvement Plan as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cobb, and your team. To the principals, if you need to leave, truly understand, you have a full day tomorrow, and we thank you. Our next item is the public hearing for the Spring Independent School District State Financial Accountability Rating. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the Board. Tonight, we'll discuss the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, which is commonly referred to as the School First Report. By law, school districts are required to prepare an annual financial accountability report within two months of receiving the official rating, and each school district must announce and hold a public hearing to distribute the results of that report. Do I have a copy, as I see you pulling out, in your yellow folder? The School First Report is a financial accountability rating system that holds school districts accountable for the quality of their financial management. It is designed to encourage better management of financial resources in order to provide the maximum allocation possible for instructional purposes. This rating system was used to assess the district's 2017-2018 fiscal year, and it consists of fifteen base indicators that analyze trends related to financial management efficiencies. The first five indicators were answered with either a yes or a no, and so while the remaining indicators are assigned a point value. Each indicator is weighted equally, with the exception of the first five. Failure to comply with any of the first five indicators results in automatic failure. And I'm pleased to announce that for the 2017-2018 fiscal year, Spring ISD achieved a rating of an A, which is, of course, the highest and represents superior achievement. The first report, and the first report also includes some required disclosures. Those six disclosures are a copy of the current superintendent's employment contract, reimbursements received by the superintendent and Board members for fiscal year ended 2018, any outside compensation and fees received by the superintendent for professional or consulting services, a listing of gifts valued above $250 that were received from outside vendors by the Board, the superintendent, or their immediate family members. It also includes a listing of any business transactions between the Board members and the district, and of course, any additional information that the Board of Trustees would have liked to have included in this report. And we'll have a copy of the report available on the district's award-winning financial transparency website later this week. There are a couple of items I would like to draw your attention to in the report, and for starters, beginning on page five, there's a nice, easy-to-understand explanation of each one of the indicators that just explains what exactly is being measured and what the results mean. And then also, on page 10, we have just some additional information that we've included that helps our community members and our stakeholders understand what's happening in the district, and just a nice little breakdown of some of the financial information. But specifically, I wanted to draw your attention to the personnel management section there. We have this graph that we've been keeping up with for the last several years, and when we did this calculation for the report, I just wanted to point out that over the last five years, at the Board's approval, we have increased our teacher salaries by almost 15%, which I thought was worthy of noting for you all. And then also later tonight, we'll be looking at our tax rate and tax collection, so I wanted to bring your attention to the tax collections at the bottom of page 10, which just shows the trends of how much or what percentage of our tax levy that we're collecting each year, and you see the 2017-18 years a little lower than what we've seen before, but that was also the year of Hurricane Harvey. So that is the School First Report for the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. Ms. Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak to this agenda item under public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
As there are no identified speakers, we will continue with tonight's agenda. Our next item is the second reading of the TASB-proposed revision to Board Policy FNF Local. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Staff, Julie Hill.
Madam President, Dr. Watson and trustees, at this time, I am actually going to turn the conversation over for Trustee Adams to lead us in a discussion. I believe this is the policy FNF on student rights and responsibilities investigations and searches, to which there will be some discussion tonight. So, Trustee Adams?
Good evening, everybody. I'm wondering if anybody else had an opportunity to review FNF Local and has given any thought to the discussion we had Thursday as it relates to the first paragraph?
I have been Googling this, and I keep coming up with lawyers who give people advice on what to do if a police officer encourages you or asks you to visit the police station that they'd like to talk to you. And I think that most of the lawyers say that police officers do not have to tell you the truth during an interview, but if you ask them to leave, you are allowed to leave, and that if you refuse to answer, that is not, what's the term that you were, I can't remember the legal term, but that is perfectly all right that you're within your rights. So I'm wondering if we ought to just leave that sentence out?
Okay.
So the governance committee been around and around, had a lot of conversation on this particular policy, which is why we pulled it out of the packet and gave you some additional time to look at it. Currently, and it's not just our policy, we've, I know the district has given us, other districts have the same policy, I can't remember which ones they were, you may have to refresh my memory, Ms. Hill. So it's not uncommon, but it's a little uncomfortable for me to force a student to have to answer questions, and then if they don't, there are consequences. So I know we had asked our chief police to weigh in on this one.
So thank you. There's really two issues to look at here. We also, as you're discussing, we have the criminal side of it, there's some criminal implications, but there's also, I believe in the spirit of the law, or the direction it was written, was for school safety, and so you have to focus too on the ability for school administrators to have the ability to dive down in administrative investigation to make sure that they are questioning students on a safety component. And so police officers, as it speaks to the law and the application of it on our side, we have to have a legal right to be where we are, and so...
As there are no identified speakers, we will continue with tonight's agenda. Our next item is the second reading of the Tasby Proposed Revision to Board Policy FNF Local. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Staff, Julie Hill.
Madam President, Dr. Watson and trustees, at this time, I am actually going to turn the conversation over for Trustee Adams to lead us in a discussion. I believe this is the policy FNF on student rights and responsibility of investigations and searches, to which there would be some discussion tonight. So, Trustee Adams?
Good evening, everybody. I'm wondering if anybody else had an opportunity to review FNF Local and has given any thought to the discussion we had Thursday as it relates to the first paragraph?
I have been Googling this, and I keep coming up with lawyers who give people advice on what to do if a police officer encourages you or asks you to visit the police station that they'd like to talk to you. And I think that most of the lawyers say that police officers do not have to tell you the truth during an interview, but if you ask them to leave, you are allowed to leave, and that if you refuse to answer, that is not, uh, what's the term that you were? I can't remember the legal term, but that is perfectly all right that you're within your rights.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if we ought to just leave that sentence out.
Okay.
So the Governor's Committee been around and around, had a lot of conversation on this particular policy, which is why we pulled it out of the packet and gave you some additional time to look at it. Currently, and it's not just our policy, we've, I know the district and, um, has given us a dis- other districts have the same policy. I can't remember which ones they were. You may have to refresh my memory, Ms. Hill. So it's not uncommon, but it's a little uncomfortable for me to force a student to have to answer questions, and then if they don't, there are consequences. So I know we had asked our Chief Police to weigh in on this one.
So, thank you. The, uh, listen, there's really two issues to look at here. Uh, we also, as you're discussing, we have the criminal side of it, of the, there's some criminal implications. But there's also, I believe in the spirit of the law, or the direction it was written, was for school safety. And so you have to focus too on the ability for school administrators to have the ability to dive down in administrative investigation, to make sure that they are questioning students on a safety component. And so, uh, police officers, as it speaks to the law and the application of it on our side, we have to have a legal right to be where we are. And so if an administrator has a reasonable suspicion to believe that they are investigating something beyond a administrative case and we are introduced to it, that same measure of law is going to be applied to us, applied to us from the law enforcement side. So based on that, the statement itself, or the refusal of, they still have the ability to do that, and I believe as we go through the disciplinary side, there's still an appellate process that the student will have if they fail to comply with the order from the school. So in the, as far as enforcing the law, uh, we are held to a different standard as far as to the ability to be able to prosecute. Arrest is still, uh, you can still refuse to give a comment, uh, if you're doing a police investigation, but if the evidence still exists, there still can be an arrest made. So, to, long and short of it, um, this, the, your ability to not to give a statement is not always a predicate on you remaining free and not going to jail.
So my extra digging into this, so there, there's actually two issues. There's the issue of police involvement, and there's the issue of school administrator or district personnel involvement. So, uh, police involvement in this scenario is already covered under another policy, GRA Local. Um, so that all of the journal articles and white papers I read, um, said that as a matter of policy, uh, school district personnel are not considered agents of the state for purposes of discipline. In that context, the discipline is important. And so, now, read the policy as, as I think we're trying to massage it. It says, "District officials may question a student regarding the student's own conduct or the conduct of other students in the context of school discipline." I think that is an important highlight that it's in the context of school discipline. And so the Supreme Court has not touched this. Uh, there isn't any case law on point on this issue. Uh, and there's a lot of case law on the issue of First Amendment rights and Fourth Amendment rights as it relates to school law. So this is something that I, I had the debate with myself about whether I wanted to plant my flag on Ms. Hill in terms of constitutional rights. Um, so continuing the reading, "In the context of school discipline, students may not refuse to answer questions based on a right not to incriminate themselves." And so I'm more comfortable with this language than I was a few weeks ago. Uh, I would like it reflected in the record that, um, there is an emphasis on this being in the context of school discipline. And there's a line that gets crossed when we start talking about criminals, the chief said. Uh, so if we read this the way it is, I am now comfortable with the language.
Thank you, Winford, because when I went through it and looked at it, I was like chief in that, yes, the administrators, the principals or district principals who's handling the discipline should have every right to question that student, and no refusal should be given. Now, in doing that, a parent should be contacted and advised as well, but the student just can't say, "I refuse to answer," not want to have anything to do because he may incriminate himself, and think that there would be nothing that would happen to him.
And this is a kind of a basis for why this has been this way. So the law is ever-evolving, and, um, there is a legal doctrine, uh, in loco parentis, which basically means that we as, as school officials sort of take on the role as parents for the time the children are in our custody. That doctrine is ev- is diminishing, has been diminishing for many decades, because the way schools act as agents of the state has evolved. And so there may come a point where students, the Supreme Court determines that students do have absolute Fifth Amendment rights in the context of interactions with even school administrators. We are not there yet. So at this time, I'm comfortable with this language.
Thank you. I just worry about the practicality of it. I guess I've handled and been the parent of much more stubborn kids than you have been, where, uh, you know, if a stu- student or a child doesn't want to answer me, they just didn't. Uh, so I, I just, I, I know we've got a wonderful lawyer here, we've got a wonderful policeman, and, uh, I, I'm just working in a different context as a parent and a teacher, that, um, to me, this sentence doesn't make any difference in anything I ever did with, uh, discipline or when I caught a student teaching, uh, cheating. They always denied it. They were, they were responding quite a bit, only I had, only I had the sheet in my hands, you know, whatever. So, uh, I, you know, I will bow to the lawyer and the policeman, so, but, like I say, I don't think this makes any difference in the real world.
Good.
Done?
Thank you. Chief Hill? Do you continue?
Yes, I would love to continue, and, um, I would just ask that when the consent agenda goes forward, that this would be one of the items that y'all consider on the motion.
Okay.
I, I think, because I wanted that piece reflected in the record, we should do it actually.
Uh, do the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like for, for Board of Trustees to approve the second reading of proposal, vision, revisions to Board Policy FNF Local.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the second reading of proposed revisions to Board Policy FNF Local.
Second up. It's been moved by Winford Adams Jr., seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board moves the approval of the second reading of proposed revisions to Board Policy FNF Local. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Abstention. Please let the record show, we have six, four, and one abstention, abstention. Thank you. Next item is the, uh, do you have anything else, Ms. Hill?
Um, yes, I do have another item on the agenda next, um, related to the nomination of one of our trustees for the Region Four position B seat on the Tasby Board of Directors. And I would like to, once again, turn the discussion back over to you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you. As you know, we, the Region Four has a office for position. Charles Cunningham from Humble ISB is on the board there, and at this time, we have an opportunity to nominate someone for his position that he has left. So at this time, do we have, um, nomination?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees nominate Trustee Donald Davis for the Region Four position B seat on the Tasby Board of Directors.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Winford Adams Jr., seconded by Christian Chris Bell, that the Board of Trustees nominate Trustee Donald Davis for the Region Four position B seat on the Tasby Board of Directors. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. I think I say all hands, said all hands, yeah. The motion carries unanimously.
I want to say thank you, uh, for the opportunity to serve, and to serve our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you for going and brought them here.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chief Hill. Our next item is the interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Spring Independent School District for the Twenty-First Century Grant Program at Bama Middle School. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of School Leadership and Student Support Services, Dr. Lepita Hinaosa.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. Tonight, we bring to you our MOU with Harris County Department of Ed, and this is our after-school Twenty-First Century Grant. We will be, um, we are in our fourth year of implementation at Bama Middle School, and the grant for this year is a total of $138,976. And so the administration is asking for the board to accept, um, this MOU and this partnership.
Thank you, Dr. Hinaosa. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Spring Independent School District for the Twenty-First Century Grant Program at Bama Middle School.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees approve the proposed interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Spring Independent School District for the Twenty-First Century Grant Program at Bama Middle School.
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees approve the proposed interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Spring Independent School District for the Twenty-First Century Grant Program at Bama Middle School.
Second up. Second. It's been moved by Jenna Gonzalez, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Spring Independent School District for the Twenty-First Century Grant Program at Bama Middle School. Is there any discussion?
Just congratulations. This is a wonderful, wonderful program, and, um, you went out and got it. And, um, this is extra funds that Spring ISB taxpayers didn't, well, maybe they did it indirectly with sales tax or something like that. But it's nice to have this money come in for a good program. Thank you.
And it also has a lot of benefits and opportunities for our students that otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't have those choices, and so that's what makes it even more special.
Thank you, and I think the data from last year showed that those students who participated in the Twenty-One, Twenty-First Century Grant Program with Ms. Taylor, their test scores improved tremendously.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
We've had to see that last year.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Newhouse. Um, we have had tremendous improvement. As you know, this grant, um, the selection of the students are students specifically that are at risk, that are falling behind in their studies. So all of the students in the program, and, um, we have ten that are within our local grant, and then the one that's in partnership with Harris County Department of Ed. So we have a total of eleven schools, and the majority of the students that participated in the after-school program outperformed the students that did not, not only in their test scores, but in their grades, um, higher attendance, and lower discipline referrals. We're very fortunate to be in the fourth year of this grant.
Yes, thank you.
Five years, right? Yes, it is five years, so we do have one more year, and I know, uh, Ms. Taylor and of course, uh, Ms. Fontenot, they're, we're already looking for an additional grant that we're able to continue to-
So it's been a deal of five years?
It, it ends up to five years, and our performance definitely puts us up at the top, um, you know, worst priority, but we do have to apply again. But there's several opportunities that are already available through Harris County Department of Ed. We have the case grant, um, that will become available in January, and then, of course, uh, the next round of the Twenty-First Century Grants that will become available at the end of next year. So we have this year and next year to, um, apply for and secure funding for our schools.
Thank you. So, Board, all those in favors, please raise your right hand. We have no opposition, one abstention. And that abstention, Mr. Davis, he's an employee of the Harris County Department of Education. I'm sorry, Mr. Adams. He's employed with Harris County Department of Education. So the motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is the one-time revenue and expenditures. At this time, I'd like to again recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrooks.
Thank you, President Newhouse. We are bringing back an updated, uh, version of the one-time costed expenditures in which you have another blue folder that has, it's blue, but it's, uh, updated. And so based on the guidance and the information that we received from you all after Thursday evening's discussion, we do want to walk through a couple of the changes that have been made. But before we do, I did want to ask Coach Amandola to come up and speak with you all about the relocation of the district's track.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and Trustees. See that?
Oh, it's not up there.
There it is.
Okay. The first picture we have there is Spring High School. Spring High School was the district track stadium. You can see the construction that we're taking over on the bottom end is going to replace, we're going to have to replace the discus ring across the parking lot. Our shot put ring is going to be next to the ROTC building and tennis courts and the baseball field wedged in that little corner. And there's actually, there's, there's no place to warm up other than the infield. And if you've been to a track meet, if all the things are running around the track and students have to warm up on the infield, it's a distraction, it's not safe, it's not the best case scenario. We have a better option. Better option is to decane, okay? Oh, that's it? There we go. Now, with, with the construction at Decane, you can see the road that they put in for the Decane High Place in the parking lot is going to remove the two long jump, triple jump pit, and pole vault pit. We're going to relocate them to the west side of the stadium, uh, and it's going to actually cause them to tear up the existing discus ring. The discus ring will move to the, to the north end of that sector, and the, the three pits will go to, to the right. Now, you can see it has a great place to warm up, the new shot put ring we're going to put in right there, we have a pole vault runway, two knee long jump and triple jump runways, and a place that those students can warm up for the event, completely eliminating kind of traffic in the infield, which is really important for us. Uh, the good thing about that is tied into the bond issue and the, and the bond money for the construction of Decane High School, the, the discus ring and the three pits, uh, that, that money's encumbered into the bond, so that's not going to cost us anything out of pocket. Only out-of-pocket expense we have are upgrading the timing system to digital, and that would run, cause us to run some CAT five, and we have to do one at the, uh, the north end and one at the south end because if the wind's blowing the other direction, we have to change the finish line. And we'll have to do some, some repairs to the track, and one of which will be a structural spray. Also, tied into this, structural spray on this track will allow us to upgrade the new exchange zones for the one by, uh, one by one and the one by two. The exchange zones have changed this year. International marks are now beginning the exchange zone. Exchange zone is longer, and we get correct markings on the track. So, we're going to Decane, we have, it's great for students, it's great for the fans, uh, and the only thing that's really going to cost us out of pocket i- is the, uh, structural spray, some memory repairs, and, uh, making the digital timing system available on both ends.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coach, yeah, that, that outlasted before we really started talking about it, but thank you for coming back and sharing that with us. Uh, that was a, a discussion point about the warm-up area, and, and I know with the new ninth grades in that stream, they're going to have some areas on the other side of that facility, but that's, that's not going to be convenient enough.
No, and the only thing that's going to put out this far as track, for district track type stuff, is going to be the discus ring. Put a shot put ring out there too, if we need to, to grab a shot put.
So that's, so, so George Stadium, uh, is basically going to go back to Spring High. Is it going to be used for any other purposes?
Yeah, well, we still have our, our Thursday night middle school and JV track section. We use it every, two out of every three weekends, on Thursday nights, so it'll still be used, just not, you know, honestly, I mean, without getting long-winded, the Decane side is perfect. We would have done that probably years ago if- We use it every, two out of every three weekends, on Thursday nights, so it'll still be used, just not, you know, honestly, I mean, without getting long-winded, the Decane side is perfect. We would have done that probably years ago if, if it was constructed differently from the start. You can see, you can't really see it on that, but the long jump, uh, pole vault pit to the north end is a light standard there, you only could run it in one direction, so you couldn't have a varsity meet there if you couldn't run the pole vault in both directions. Also, you can see the dot, the white dot of the shot put is probably about fifteen feet from lane eight, you really couldn't have a safe shot put, so that's why we need a shot put down there, and the discus, the elevation of the, of the discus ring is so much higher than the retention pond, that's, but it would be, it's not a true meet on, on a district, a district event, so we couldn't have a, a varsity district track meet there anyway. But it's, it's a great facility, it's going to be great. And just so you know, I mean, all being as there, the district track facility runs at Plymouth, that's their main, and that's the middle school, and they have, of course, that's where they have their facilities, it's not a real stadium at all, it's a middle school stadium and a auxiliary stadium as well.
Bill Nelson Stadium.
Yes, ma'am.
Coach Amandola, I spent the last ten nights watching world championships, track and pool in Doha, and the last three nights, they have had the relay events, and all the discussion has been on the new markings for the four-by-one and the four-by-four relays, and how it's going to affect all of us in the United States this next year, putting water for the Olympic year. So, if we are putting those new markings in now, I think we'll be ahead of a few schools and districts that we can offer the opportunity to have regional and area competitions at a certified, qualified, uh, track.
Unless they have, unless they got the markings in the last few months, they're not going to have them.
Right, right, because we're just going to know, yes. Thank you, thank you for thinking of that.
Thank you for the explanation.
Sounds like some good revenue generating opportunities. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so with that said, I did want to bring your attention to a couple of the changes that were made since the discussion on Thursday evening. So, if you all have your updated list in front of you, the third item, that's under the request column, which is the high school science supplies, that amount has been updated, and it has been increased to include some additional supplies, and you also have a copy of the updated list with all the details behind this area, uh, behind this, this list. And the way that we were able to increase the amount that we were allocating to the high school science supplies was because we had a lengthy discussion on Thursday evening regarding, uh, band instruments for the Spring Woods Village Middle School campus, and Mr. Miranda and his team were able to go back and look at the bond budget, particularly the FFNE, which is the Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Budget, and we had some residual funds there, so we're able to take care of the cost of those band instruments from that pot of funds, which freed up some additional funds on this list.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I love to see that the thousand dollars supplement for employees is still there.
Yes, still there, yes. And so, with that, some additional, that, that was about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and so a portion of that went into the high school supplies as mentioned, and then also there's a new item that is added to the list, and it's the last item on page one.
What is Jason's name?
I'd like to ask Ms. Bradford to talk to you all through that.
Sure, good evening, Madam President, and members of the board, Dr. Watson. So, we've actually been working with Jason's learning for a few years, and it does provide us with some middle school science enrichment, it's an online platform, it also gives our teachers some professional learning to really experience the sciences, um, some STEM connections, engineering, it also brings us a partnership with Chevron, and so we are able to have mentors come in and work with us. This year, we've started expanding it beyond the middle schools to include elementary connections, as well as high school, and we also have the opportunity for teachers and students to participate in the Argonaut Experience, um, so where they get to travel with other school districts, in-state and out-of-state, to really deepen and strengthen our science connections.
If I recall, Chevron has, has been a supporter of this financially and fast.
Well, it's exciting, it's been exciting for years, the Jason Project, uh, that you do underwater exploration and, uh, discover ancient artifacts and interesting geology on the ocean floor, and I just think this, uh, really is a high-quality thing to add.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then I would like to ask the board for your approval this evening, so that we can take the next steps with these expenditures.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed one-time cost expenditures as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the proposal, one-time cost expenditures as presented by the administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed one-time cost expenditures as presented by the administration.
Madam President.
Any discussion?
Yes. Um, just wanted to make this comment, and, um, I'm trying to be as unbiased as possible, but I have to say this, the ROTC program has been around our district since, um, two-thousand, and back in two thousand thirteen, I came before this board asking for new facilities, upgraded facilities, Westfield and Spring, because when Decane was built, they had their program already built, been in school. We had a discussion during a public forum that highlighted the necessity to have Westfield ROTC program, facilities upgraded, and also Spring. Back last year, we took care of Spring High School, and with this, once we approved tonight, we get a chance to opportunity to take care of Westfield High School, uh, I'm trying to be motion here. But anyway, I want to thank, you know, the leadership team for, it has been almost six years to make this a potential reality. I want to thank the, uh, leadership team and our budget and finance department for finding ways to take care of Westfield as well as Spring while we're taking care of, um, Westfield ROTC is very dear to me, so I just want to thank you, and I'm looking forward to success of the upgrade design for Westfield High School ROTC.
Thank you. Captain Davis, we heard your request, and I'm sure the administration is happy to oblige.
Well, Captain Davis, um, as I understood it, Decane included our ROTC facilities when the school was designed, and, uh, then with the ninth grade center, we've been able to do springs, so I think, um, you may have started this a long time ago, but I think the catch-up of spring and Westfield has been possible just recently because of, um, a successful bond and, uh, wonderful money management within the school district, so thank you, money managers, as well as other people.
I would, and...
Can we recognize that team? That's the team, let me see, Ms. Kennedy, are you, yes, you are. I think she's the only m- member of our finance team that's out there, but she's a mighty member, that's our budget manager, and so she's got a long-to-do list after this vote tonight.
I just want to thank Captain Davis, uh, and let you know how inspired and impressed I am, and you represent a case study in persistence, and it's something that you've modeled for your students when you were a teacher, and you continue to model for this district in your leadership, sticking with this project as long as you have to see it through, so I would applaud, I applaud you for your persistence.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously, and we are happy to announce the approval and adoption of the resolution to pay staff a one-time retention supplement, so.
When do they give that?
I will now entertain the motion. Madam President, approve and adopt the resolution to pay staff a one-time retention supplement.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt the resolution to pay staff a one-time retention supplement.
Second. It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt the resolution to pay staff a one-time retention supplement. Any discussion?
Good question, Mr. House. It will be processed on the November twenty-fifth payroll.
Okay, then.
I'm sure that will be good news.
A good surprise.
Thanksgiving. Yes, ma'am. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously.
Is communication public appetizers for us? I'm sorry. I'm out of order.
We have, we have an email call, staff going out at eight AM tomorrow morning, recognizing the supplement, as well as some of the other ti- um, one-time expenditures too as well, but I think our staff will be well received.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Very happy to do this for our employees, thank you. Our next item is the approval of the twenty nineteen tax rate. Uh, Ms. Westbrook, please continue with this, because we're continuing to smile.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much, President Newhouse. If I may, um, take these two items out of order because they'll assist us with the flow of the discussion, and so if we may begin with item C, which is the two thousand nineteen appraisal roll certification, and that is on page eighty-four, the last page of your binder, and, as you all remember, we passed our budget in June based upon the certified estimates that we receive from the Harris County Appraisal District on around April thirtieth of each year, and then subsequently, we received the certified value roll, and that's the roll that we're required to set the district's tax rate on. And so, we received the certified values from the Harris County Appraisal District on August thirteenth, and what you have in front of you is the certification of the appraisal roll, and you'll see the amounts that are, um, broken down here, you see the total appraised value, that's the total value before any exemptions, which is the, the fifteen point, uh, two billion. The next number that you see is the taxable value on the appraisal roll, which means those, those properties have been appraised and they're on the certified appraisal roll as of, um, August thirteenth, and that's that twelve point seven-five billion dollar number. The next number is taxable units, but they're under protest, so our constituents have the opportunity to protest their values once they were received earlier in the year, and so they're still under protest and they're pending their appraisal review board, and so what Harris County Appraisal District does is they give us the value if the owner's claim is upheld, so if the owner's claim is not upheld, then the value will actually be higher. So, that's what this one point, uh, one-six-six billion dollars represents. And then the last number there, those are properties that are within the school district, they know that they're properties that will be taxable at some point, but they're not quite on our certified roll. And so, what happens is throughout the tax season, items will become certified, and we'll see our values adjusted throughout the tax season. So, with all of those items together, that brings us to a taxable value within the Spring ISD boundaries, uh, fourteen point four-two-five billion, and that is the...
Should we be comparing?
Okay, that is the value that we will use to, um, set the tax rate in just a moment. And to put things into perspective, the, the total value represents just shy of a ten percent increase in our property values compared to the two thousand eighteen, uh, value year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, with that, we're asking the board to ratify the appraisal, uh, roll for the district.
Okay, we will do that first. I'd like to entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees ratify the twenty nineteen appraisal roll certification.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees ratify the twenty nineteen appraisal roll certification.
Second. It's been moved by Winfred Adams, Jr., seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees ratify the twenty nineteen appraisal roll certification. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and so with that, if we can turn to page eighty-one, and we'll look at the Spring ISD two thousand nineteen tax rate. So, we recall as the eighty-sixth legislative session was kicking off, there were two main points, number one was property tax relief, and number two was teacher pay, and so we spent a considerable amount of time addressing teacher pay at our June board meeting when you all adopted the two thousand nineteen-twenty budget, and now we're addressing the second part of that legislative session, and that's the property tax relief. So, there were a lot of changes that happened as a result of House Bill Three, one of them was some change in terminology. So, before, we had two rates, two tax rates, one that was called, um, effective tax rate, and that was the one where we had to say that it was an increase even though we may have been decreasing our rate. That one was repealed, there's no effective tax rate anymore. The other was the rollback tax rate, and that's the rate in which, when we do the truth and taxation calculation, which all school districts are required to ca- to calculate, when we do that, it gives us a rate that says that this is the rate that the school district cannot set a tax rate any higher than that without going out to our voters for approval. And so, that rate was called the rollback rate prior to this eighty-six Texas legislative session. Now, it is conveniently called the voter approval rate, so we cannot set a tax rate that exceeds that voter approval rate. And the other big change in the, the tax law throughout this legislative session was the compression, the compression of the tax rate. So, when we look at our maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate, it's broken into two components, and that's what has been for the last several years, the first one dollar, which was the original compressed tax rate, it was compressed even further as a result of, um, House Bill Three, and it was compressed by ninety-three percent. And so, if you look at the chart that we have here in the middle of the page, you can see in two thousand seventeen, that rate was a dollar, two thousand eighteen, it was a dollar, we're proposing for two thousand nineteen that that'll be ninety-three cents. And the next component is what we hear a lot about in school finance, and that's the golden pennies. So, we're able to add the additional four pennies, uh, without any election or, or anything, for the golden pennies, and so in two thousand seventeen, that was four cents, in two thousand eighteen, it was six cents, but only because of the provision related to Hurricane Harvey. So, for two thousand nineteen, we're proposing that it's, it's four cents because that's the maximum that we're allowed to have. So, our maintenance and operations tax rate that the district is proposing is ninety-seven cents, and that's that ninety-three cents plus the four cents for maintenance and operations. Okay? And then the second component, we know, for the tax rate is what's called the INS rate, which is interest and sinking, and that portion of the tax rate supports the district's debt service and pays for our bonds and all of our data, debt associated with that. And so, we're proposing a tax rate on the debt service side of forty-six cents, and that will help us pay for our debt that is now completely issued, and that's the three-hundred-and-thirty million dollars for the two thousand sixteen bond, plus all of our outstanding debt we had prior to that, for a total of seven hundred and ten point two is our total debt that is being supported by that forty-six cent debt rate. So, we're proposing for the two thousand nineteen tax rate, a dollar and forty-three cents, which is an eight cents decrease, um, from the prior year, which, to say that differently, it's a five point three percent decrease from the prior year, and it's also, if you'll turn with me to the next page, the lowest tax rate the Spring ISD has passed in the last twenty years. Yes.
Wow.
And so, you'll see the historical tax rates here that take us from the year two thousand to now, the two thousand nineteen year, you see shaded in blue, two thousand and seven, that was the first, the last time that the tax rate was compressed, we all remember that, when everyone had those nearing two-dollar tax rates, during the tax compression in two thousand and seven. So, little history for us over here, and then the other side is comparative, so we can see where we stand compared to other Houston-area school districts, and... And I made certain to note our source here because just like us, lots of school districts are still in the process of developing and passing their tax rates this month. So, just know that that's as of September 4th and that is independently sourced information.
I know for years, I've often heard that Spring is more expensive tax-wise than our neighboring district. And you're right, we don't know where they're going to end up at, but just looking at this, we're still above some of these guys.
True. It's, it's a fact. Yes, sir.
I, I was trying to calculate this in my head. Um, what does that mean? So, if your house is appraised at $100,000, what's your, what's your tax bill?
I think it's about $60 is the savings and the difference between the $1.51 and the $1.43.
Okay. Thank you.
I noticed you included some of this information in the accountability rating, uh, that you compared us to a few other school districts.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, I had always heard that we were charging the most of all the taxpayers and that, um, it seems like a rumor that just won't go away sometimes.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, maybe we all just need to post on social media now.
Right. Tweet it. That's right. Well, we did together, um, pamphlets that kind of highlighted that, um, the government committee did last year. And that went out. Communications did an amazing job in getting that out, community, so. We keep trying to tell the story, but sometimes it's hard to overcome a belief system that's not, uh, not always accurate.
That's true. I know our neighbors have been asking us, when are we going to go down? So, now, all of us can go back and happily tell our neighbors that we have lowered your tax rate. So, I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve a tax rate of $1.43 and that the Board approve the 2019 tax rate ordinance and resolution.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the tax rate of $1.43 and that the Board approve the 2019 tax rate ordinance and resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Dawn Davis, that the Board of Trustees approve a tax rate of $1.43 and that the Board approve the 2019 tax rate ordinance and resolution. Is there any discussion?
Uh, Ms. Westbrook, this, with the, uh, tax rules being more than we expected apparently, um, it feels like we are living in a very prosperous area lately. It, there seem to be, um, uh, less, um, empty strip malls, you know, that kind of thing. And, uh, there's, um, different residences and I see more neighborhoods being built even.
We do have more neighborhoods coming along. We are still more commercial in nature. When you look at our property values, we're still higher on the commercial side, but there is more residential growth that we're seeing throughout the district and more subdivisions and things. So, that's, that's good and hopefully yields some additional new Spring ISB students as well.
And the Spring Ribs area seems to be really filling in now. Is that it? Yeah.
That's true. So, I think we've been able to really accomplish some great things in, um, decreasing, uh, teachers' salary, being able to get out, get the, um, retention, uh, and, and still decrease taxes while we're still financially being able to achieve some things. So, that's really great.
Uh, well, and thank the curriculum department for the new science supplies, uh, that I think that are badly needed and will be wonderfully used. Uh, also, our Teach Up Spring facility, I mean, that's another thing that I think is wonderful for teachers, that they can go get, um, training. And I, I always love to see the catalog of professional development. It seems to get better every year, so. Good things.
Thank you. Thank you. So, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Westbrook.
Ma'am.
Thank you.
We appreciate you and your department. Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of item 13, which we just approved. Can I get a motion?
13H.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception, exception of item 13H, which was approved earlier in tonight's agenda.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Justine, by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of item 13H, which was just approved. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the public participation portion of our meeting. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under public participation?
Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the Board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, deployment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. And Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 551.076, for the purpose of considering the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit. No meet, no voting will take place in the closed meeting. The action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 8:39 PM. Thank you for joining us. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 9:52 PM. We will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contracts of Kathy Rodi and Charlotte Thomas upon finding that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employees of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the Board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board for Educator Certification that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and of the action taken by the Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and seconded by Winford Adams Jr., that the Board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Kathy Rodi and Charlotte Thomas upon finding that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employees of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the Board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board of Education, of, of, for Educator Certification that the employees failed to perform their contracts without good cause and of the action taken by the Board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Close the polls. Any abstentions? Thank you. We have six, four, and one abstention. Motion carries. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move the Board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of the following employee, Don Klein, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the Board's action and her rights pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of the following employee, Don Klein, as presented in closed session and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the Board's action and her rights pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Close the polls. Any abstentions? We have six, four, and one abstention. Motion carries. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board issue a school district teaching permit to the following employees, Stephen Walker and Sean Periden, for the purpose of teaching non-core career and technology courses and to authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the Commissioner of Education of the Board's actions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Chris Bell, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board issue a school district teaching permit to the following employees, Stephen Walker and Sean Per- Periden, for the purpose of teaching non-core career and technology courses and to authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the Commissioner of Education of the Board's actions. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I move to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. There's no further business and the meeting is officially adjourned at 9:57 PM.